It's time for the commission meeting to order, please. The agenda will be as written, so the first item on the agenda is approval of the regular minutes of the April 1st meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Minutes have been approved. Second item on the agenda is application PDD 08-1 filed by Golden Eagle Estates Limited requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from A1 Agricultural District to Plan Development District R1, Single Family Residential, and R2, Multi-Family Residential on a 31-acre tract of land located on the north side of East Wayne Avenue, east of the Huntington Road ditch, continued from the April 1st, 2008 meeting. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think we'll do just a little bit of review, and John, if you could go to the preliminary plat, if we have that on. I guess, before we go there, to pause, I wanted to introduce Wayne Nelson. He's appeared at these meetings before, but he's sitting in for the city engineer over there and can address questions you have about drainage or other engineering-related items as they may come up. The focus of this particular follow-up item is that we have worked through, I think, the majority of the residential portion of what we've referred to as Golden Eagle Estates, number five, or Phase Five. And just in the way of summary, we're talking about what has been worked through is the area to the north, which is identified as Wildcat Circle. These six lots here are proposed for duplex or townhome construction. The remaining lots around Wildcat Circle are proposed for single-family development, as are these lots on the outer ring, accepting the duplex lots, and then single-family to here. We've discussed here that a single building with up to four units was discussed in the original application. Just because it says up to four units doesn't mean that it may not end up being built as a triplex or duplex coming back here. We had discussion about the location, configuration, dimensions of the park site that was being discussed and proposed, and the revised configuration has 100 feet of frontage here on Red Hawk Lane, comes back in this dimension, is joined up with this dedication that occurred previously, so you have kind of an Oklahoma-shaped park there with the panhandle out to Red Hawk. And then, what was discussed here at the last meeting was that the commission expressed a preference for that being not a utility and pedestrian easement, but making that essentially part of the park, so that this corridor would be owned by the city, would become part of the shaded gray area, would not be part of these two lots. As a follow-up to that item, there was some discussion, but not a recommendation about the side yard setbacks here on 41 and 40. Mr. Howson indicated, which I believe is a good idea, some sort of covenant that required the garage on this 40 to be on the west side of the lot, and the garage here to be on the east side of the lot, so you had garage and not windows or anything on the opposing sides of the pedestrian corridor. The one thing that was discussed but not resolved was whether, because of the presence of that and the reduction in the lot width, whether some consideration should be given to reducing the side yard setback there on lots 40 and 41, from the required seven and a half to some lesser number, which could be five feet or six feet, could be a reasonable number, so I think we'd want to hear from Mr. Howson on that. In our previous discussions about this item, I think what we didn't have was much information or drawing or concept about what was proposed for the large lot at the end of East Wayne. And so, at our original March 4th meeting, action on this portion of the plan was postponed to allow preparation and submittal of a concept plan. We brought this back on the 5th, or on the 1st, to discuss primarily the changes to the park. At that meeting, the applicant indicated a willingness or interest to reduce the development density on Lot 48 from 16 to 12 units. We still asked for some sort of conceptual drawing that would indicate how that type of development could be laid out, how the density would work, how it would relate to the property to the south. This is their concept, then, to get your bearings. Wayne terminates here. The boundaries of the proposed park side would fit right in here, and so, as this layout is proposed, you'd have a parking area here, a short buffer, and then the park would be here. These are three apartment-type buildings. In other words, they're designed to be a fourplex. And we went through, and again, this is a conceptual plan, but just to see how it would fit on the lot, just to give you an idea, the building sizes there are 68 by 55, so that means each of those three buildings there cover a little more than 3,700 square feet, and with putting three of them there, that adds up to 11,220 square feet of building. But the lot coverage is about 16 percent, and for apartments in an R2 setting, you can cover up to 40 percent of a lot with buildings, so it is below that. The density would be approximately seven and a half units per acre. That's less than the maximum in an R2 district, but still more than you would see in a single-family type subdivision. The buildings proposed are one-story in height. They measure about 18 feet to the peak of the roof. They would have a 30-foot setback on Red Hawk, which would match the setback of the homes on that street. They're talking about a 16-foot side yard or buffer on the south between the buildings and the nearest single-family house to the south. 58 feet on the north, which would include the parking, and then 51 feet on the rear. To support 12 apartment units here, that would require 24 off-street parking spaces. Their plan, they submitted, showed 25. They did not submit a specific landscape plan, but again, you have to imagine a house sitting right in this location and another house across the street here, and our landscaping ordinance requires that if you have multifamily that abuts single-family development, there has to be at least a 15-foot buffer that is landscaped in between, and this plan allows for that. John showed you the building elevations, and what they were looking at was a shingled-pitched roof and buildings that would have woodlapped siding, and the architect was proposing some brick wing scotting around the bottom. So I think I'll let you go back to that first slide, John, and just see how that would interrelate. Again, the comprehensive plan shows the area at the end of East Wayne as being appropriate for low-density residential development. The overall plan for the subdivision would be about 3.7 units per acre, which would fall in or below that four units per acre, which is considered low-density. The specific plan for the multifamily housing on Lot 48 does not. What, I think the position that the planning staff has taken is that we don't really see what the rationale is for kind of inserting this development and this particular density of housing adjacent to single-family home sites and across the street. And so, what we've asked for, we have now received, which is some sort of concept drawing, showing you how this would interrelate with the rest of the subdivision, and we think it's up to the developers to give you good reasons why it fits and why they think it's compatible. But with that, I think we have walked through all the issues related to how the rest of this area would develop. The Park Board, Advisory Board, and the Parks and Recreation staff has endorsed the location and layout of the park. I think the thing we did want to remind the commission is that the proposal was to have 50 feet of right-of-way for Wildcat Circle, 29-foot street, and the request was for an allowance for 20-foot front yard setbacks, so the development pattern on Wildcat Circle will feel compact. It will feel close to the street in terms of character, and I want to make sure everybody recollected that. But I think with that, I would address any questions about either the park site or the proposal to develop three, fourplexes on this lot at the end of East Wayne.
Did I hear you say there were duplexes somewhere?
John, do we have the, do we have the slide that summarizes what's occurring on each of the lots?
Over here.
Okay. I guess this is the best way to walk through it. We have 79 building lots proposed on the small layout that you have in front of you. 68 of those would be for single-family dwellings. There are six lots which are backing up to the levee along the east end there. They are proposing those for either duplex or townhome development. The difference being that a duplex, you have one owner and they're renting out each side. If you have a townhome, you can potentially deed them down the middle and sell halves to individuals. They have to be constructed slightly differently, but R2 zoning allows for either type of what we call single-family attached dwellings. The two lots that are just on the north side of Wayne and next to the substation there, the original proposal, and we'd seen a concept for, you could put a single building on each lot that could accommodate up to four units and eight parking spaces. That could conceivably work, but if that is approved, they can always do a triplex or duplex instead. And then, the lot at the end of East Wayne, whose lot number keeps changing, but is now What they propose there is what we've specifically addressed in the packet, which is three fourplex buildings, 25 parking spaces, and then we have a lot on the north side of Wayne that's set aside for an existing West Star substation, and then we have a lot set aside for public park. And then, to refresh you on the other aspects of this, in terms of what the developers are giving up in the way of public dedications or things that they cannot use or develop, we have a public park area that's a little more than two acres. There's a strip of drainage right-of-way in the northwest corner for Huntington Ditch improvements, and that is 50 feet wide by 685 feet long. They've already had to give up 100 feet by 400 feet that's occupied by the West Star substation. There's a 100-foot utility easement for the high-voltage transmission lines, which really, nothing can be placed underneath those lines in the way of buildings or structures. And there's a 40-foot utility easement that runs out of the substation over to the levee. Again, no buildings or structures can be put under that easement. And then, their portion of the Oxbow they're purporting to dedicate to the city as drainage right-of-way. So those are the major public spaces or uses that won't be devoted to residential uses. So I don't know if that clarifies the question about duplexes or townhomes.
But there's nothing like the fourplexes anywhere in the area, is that right?
Not in this particular area. There is, I don't know if you can go back to the plat layout again, John. In Golden Eagle Estates, number four, which is south of Wayne, there is a lot, there's one lot that is between, I believe, Falcon View and Red Hawk, and it, I think it sits right in here. It's the only lot that faces Wayne, and that was approved to have a duplex, because all the other homes face Huntington or Falcon View or Red Hawk. That's the only lot that would face the substation itself, and that was approved for duplex use. Obviously, there are some apartments over in the Shalimar Plaza addition over here, closer to Ohio. You'll recall the nursing home that was converted to elderly apartments on Lambertson Lane. That was a pre-existing condition. But in Golden Eagle Estates itself, the only real apartments are what's the Eagle Crest Retirement Community, which is on Magnolia Road. There are some townhome or duplex lots that are going to be built on Eagle Crest Lane or Eagle Crest Avenue that's under construction right now behind the retirement community. But I think this is what we had asked the applicants to do, was to sell their vision for what was going to happen at the end of East Wayne, and that's what they provided in your packets today.
Now, there's six lots against the levee that you pointed out. You say they're townhomes or duplexes, we're giving that choice?
Yeah, the builder can decide how they want to do that, and obviously, they've got to declare that when they build it, because the construction is slightly different.
Absolutely. Now, a little further to the south, I guess, there are some twin homes. Are those duplexes or condos?
The ones that Mr. Simpson is doing in River Trail, which is farther to the south, those are built as townhomes. And this would be the same type of arrangement, townhomes that would back up to the levee.
I guess I have no problem with townhomes in the six lots, but I'm, I guess, a little concerned that they could be duplexes, which would be rental units.
Well, I think I'll let Mr. Howson, as the developer, speak to what his thoughts are for those six lots.
And these buildings on Lot 48 would be fourplexes? They would not be four townhomes back-to-back?
No, that would be like a rental apartment.
Rental units.
Yes.
Are there any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, state your name and address?
My name's Tim Howson. I've got a frog in my throat, so you're going to have to bear with me. I've had some of that head stuff the last four days, and I'm just getting over it. First of all, to Tress Monroe, a townhome versus duplex. This is a very misconceived terminology. A townhome truly is something like what you'd see down there on Manchester Manor that Vern Weiss built, or down there in Parkwood area, where Presley built those many years ago. Townhomes in this town, too loosely, are the same as duplexes. I mean, they'll build a duplex, and they'll own half of the duplex on one side. A townhome has an association. They have common areas. They have yard care. They have snow removal. They have insurance that covers the exterior of the buildings. The buildings that Simpson built over by River Trail are simply duplexes, even though they're called townhomes.
But do they have a firewall between the units?
That part I couldn't answer, but I think they do. And of course, we don't have any issue with the firewalls being built regardless, because I think that's a good idea on either one. You know, if they came across with a requirement in the minutes that we had firewalls in between on all six of these duplexes, that's fine with me, because I think that just cuts it right out of the picture of any question of where it ever can go. Because then, if you've got the firewalls and they ever decide to split it, you're already ready, say. So as far as I'm concerned, the firewalls can be a requirement on those six duplexes lining up along the dike there. Now, the fourplexes, obviously, are, the way that's designed and laid out, that will always have to be a rental unit. I mean, I don't, you can't split those. It's just, the land's not laid out there correctly, I mean, for doing that work. That isn't what our concept is. We don't want to. But going into the fourplexes here, I'll cover that. This is a transition area. You've got that Oxbow to the east, you've got the high-power lines as well as the low-voltage power lines directly north of this. That is not a good location for the kind of housing that is going up and down Red Hawk. People that are building do not like to get in, high-priced homes do not want to build them underneath a high-power voltage line. It's just not a good location. Rentals, people will rent in an area like that. People will build a cheaper home in an area like that, because it doesn't bother them as much. Somebody that builds a $300,000 home does not want to build underneath those high-power voltage lines, or even close to it. And directly west of this, if you look at the design layout, those duplexes are pretty much directly west of this. So you've got multiple-family zoning backed up on the north side of Wayne Street underneath the high-power lines. You've got this pretty much directly east of it, also backed up underneath the high-power lines, and then you've got the duplexes going along the dike, which is not quite as desirable for many, because you're getting within the 500-foot barrier of the Corps of Engineers on foundation restrictions. That's why we've done this multiple zoning on this type of location, is because the land is not quite as desirable for a nicer home. It's just not a good area. If you look in other developments, you'll see the same pattern. You'll either see parks going in, in that kind of location, like to the north, up there on the Oxbow Park on East McAdams. They put the park over there because it's a harder area to build underneath, because of the foundation requirements, Corps of Engineer. You go down there where Bob Guile did the development on Republic Circle, you've got a lot of homes with no basements in there because of the dike. So you have man-made barriers that cause this, as well as, I mean, the overhead power lines, the dykes, stuff like that are not near as desirable as you move up in your price This layout, design layout on these fourplexes would have to go in this way, and I'll tell you why. My engineer was sitting back here, and he said, "Well, if we go with this design concept, you're going to have to, you know, tap the sewer and water on the south end down there." The parking being to the north end of this, underneath the high-power lines, is a good place for it. That's where you want to park. You don't want your house close to that. So I think this layout concept is the right way to do it. Now, the only thing I would see possibly different if I was putting this in myself is up there on the north end, where it has a 24-foot north to south, I don't know what you'd call it, side easement or what, from the parking space. I would cut that down, and I would probably widen it on the south end of these fourplexes to 24 or 30 feet, if you understand what I'm saying. Let me borrow your laser. In other words, down here, I'd make that closer to 24 or 30 feet on my layout. Up here, I'd shorten that, because you've got all sorts of open space above it, and so I'd cut that down to about 14 feet. If that's workable with the planning department, that makes a better design layout. Of course, this was a concept you came up with. You know, it's not set in stone. In other words, we still have, whoever comes in would have to come back here and get a design layout approval. But it is very close to what it should be. The only thing I see that should change a little bit is the side easement on the south end should be wider, and the side easement on the north end should be narrower. The density is not really a lot greater than what you'd see on single-family dwellings in this area. If you go to the north, up there, north of the power lines, we're probably running about 4.3 homes per acre, 4.3 residences. Down here, I think Dean said it'd be, is it 3.7 units per acre? I don't know if that's right, but...
Just overall?
Pardon?
That would just be overall, including all the open space and all?
Oh, okay, okay. But what I'm saying, the density is very parallel to what you'll see on cheaper housing to the north, per acre, the density per acre. And once again, this isn't as desirable as going south on the street on Red Hawk, where you have bigger, wider lots and you have, you know, more area to work with, you're beyond the 1,000-foot line from the dike. This stuff right in here hits within the 1,000-foot line, which makes it more expensive to build if you put a basement in it. And that's undesirable for people who are wanting to spend a lot of money on a house. They don't want to spend an extra 8,000 to 12,000 and put a foundation in. They do it sometimes, but it's not desired. I think I'm about to lose my voice. Go ahead, question. I was reading your mind.
I think I'm where Margaret was at the end of the meeting in February, when you said you were totally confused.
Totally confused. You talking about the side easements, or?
What are the, what's going to be approximately the value of the housing going in here, let's say around Wildcat Circle? Is that going to be $250,000 houses, or 150, or?
I'd say probably 220 to 250 to the south. Is that what you meant on?
No, to the north.
Oh, to the north? Oh, no. No, to the north, those will probably be, I'd say we're probably in the vicinity of, realistically, they're going to be 160,000, 180, majority of them. Some of them go up over 200, but...
Show us with your...
You're talking about up here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about directly in the street, directly above your fourplex plan?
Here?
That one, yeah.
Be the same. That wouldn't change, because you've got a pretty big easement on the backside there. And your lot widths, you know, when you've got a 72 to 74-foot width, about all you can really do is a double-car garage and do somewhat of a shotgun plan where the house goes back from the street. They'll be more similar to, potentially, what we'd see on Huntington, but maybe a little better. And probably towards the north end, this might get pricier up here, because you have your heavy tree line, and so people right in here and right here might have a little higher-priced homes. Those might hit another 30,000 or 40,000 higher.
So all of these...
And this is guestimated, because you don't ever, no, pardon?
All of these are under 200,000, then?
To the north, that's what I'd speculate. When we started Golden Eagle down there many years ago, I thought we were going to have homes in the 115 to 140 area, and right off the bat, they jumped to 160 on up. And so, you know, I don't know. Of course, costs keep going up, you know, you don't get much of a house anymore.
How much footage does that translate into?
1,200 square feet on up to probably 14 on one level, on a ranch, not counting the garage.
Will there be basements in there?
Oh, I think a lot of them will. See, that's your 1,000-foot line right there, so all of these will have basements. See, that's your 1,000-foot line right there, so all these will have basements. And it's pretty likely that a lot of these will. And if they back up to that park, they may too. So I, I think it'd be a nice housing area that's a little more affordable for a lot of people. Put them in a really good area because of the tree lines and, you know, quietness.
What's the cost of each lot?
Pardon?
What does each lot cost? What's the cost of a lot?
We haven't got there yet. I'm trying to figure out what we're going to be into on specials and then price map.
Would you...
Specials anymore, running anywhere from 15,000 to 22,000 a lot.
With your pointer, would you show us where the, the line is, the power line that runs across east to west?
Well, there's a, let's see, let me, right there is a big one. See, that's a stand right there.
Tower.
Tower right there. So your big one's on each side of that, right there. And then down here, you've got another smaller line, probably a single phase going through there, but the other one's a major power supply.
Now, John, I thought your line was a little different from his. On, on, when you were doing the power line then, was, what I'm trying to see is, I'm not sure that I quite agree with you that the fourplexes are going to be any closer than your single-family homes. By your rationale is you want to place the fourplexes because people aren't going to want to invest...
This line right here, that's the, that's the Westar line, which means that they're going to expect that the improvements of homes on these lots will have to stay in front of that line, so...
That's an overhead line?
This is, this is the easement that protects that line where they want to keep anything that's a structure out from underneath. So the north end of that line is here, the south end is here, which means that on these lots, if the lot line goes back to here, placement of structure is going to be restricted from this, that point. And that line would extend down to about here. And then, as Tim mentioned, that's a transmission line. That's the one that comes down Belmont, comes over here and goes all the way on east of France. There's a, a single-phase transmission line that comes out of this substation that runs right through here, south of that. And so those transmission lines, all of that would be within the park site. These lots, this is the build, no build line right here, so you would have houses here, 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 here. And they would, their impact area would be here. These lots are deeper. These are all lots where the improvements would have to be more...
So as, as the fourplexes sighted, come down to 48 there?
They would be located right in here.
So they're actually further away from the power lines than the single-family homes? Am I seeing that right?
Not if you look at this drawing.
The parking would be up in this area, right here. Those four duplexes, three duplexes, five duplexes would be right over here. And that's four duplexes going to be from here through here. The parking going up here, put the parking there for buffer. You don't want to be close to the power lines. Single-family homes can go within seven and a half foot, and that's how it is. So you make yourself up there where it says 24 feet. You can go 17 feet up there. That's how close that house is going to be right up there. The easement here, you know, power line area. Nobody's going to put a house within seven and a half, 12, 15, and figure that out. They don't like to. Now, that is the Lord of Holy Power Line, but what we do is, the parking up here in this area, the buffer a little more, can shove fourplexes down here, but they're still going to come up as high as right here, the buildings. Look, this concept drawing shows that. The nearest corner you walk, right here. There's your corner. Building's going up there. There's the parking across here. Maybe that's your transfer, smaller line right here, maybe right over here. Out here. Going back to that other drawing, do those lot lines go clear under the power line? In other words, their lot extends under the power line through the power?
Ownership probably does. It's an easement, which just makes it useless because you can't put anything in there to obstruct it.
They tax us on it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's no-choice deal. I mean, Westar wanted 100-foot easement in there and we, five and a half years ago, this would have held us up on this. You know, there was some other stuff, but they interpreted all this area to the north as a blanket easement. And yet, that 1937, when that easement was drawn, it basically was saying from this oak tree down to this oak tree, and that's a point-to-point easement. And if you go wider than that, then you've got to address the seller to compensate them. And of course, that was the difference that Westar and us got into, but a blanket easement says the east half or the west half of 12, 13, 3, or whatever. It describes the entire track, and it did not. And so what do you do? We're over a barrel with Westar on that, and, you know, you either give in and do something about it, or, or you fight them. And we'd been through enough years of that that we didn't want to go on, so. So we gave up about two and a half acres on the south end down here, right across there, widen that easement and defined it to 100 feet.
There's a, I don't know what you call it. Is it a substation that's north of Wayne?
It's right here.
Yeah, okay.
Now, there are single-family dwellings around that, except to the east, to the west of it and, and south of it.
Down here.
They're all single-family, right?
Yeah, right.
And they're across from the substation?
But they all face east and west. None of them face the substation. That's how we designed it.
Do you have a duplex in there someplace?
Yeah, because duplex isn't quite as, right, we have a duplex lot right, right in here, I think.
Okay.
Because it, it's the only one that faces north. But it's, you know, a duplex versus a single-family home.
So just so I understand, when you said that nobody's going to want to build a $300,000 house beneath the power lines?
Right.
These aren't going to be $300,000 houses anyway?
No.
And, and you've chosen fourplexes because that's the highest density for, for?
Not necessarily. No, it's, realistically, this is about all that will work in there and make an efficiency of usage of the land.
Right.
Because you're going to have an awfully long driveway coming across the south end down here, and that's going to cost a lot of money. And your parking up here is going to cost a lot of money.
But fourplexes aren't the only use of the, that can be made of the land.
Right.
You could use duplexes.
Could be a triplex or duplexes, something like that. Yeah, that's right.
Could you put a series of townhomes in there with a little, a little bigger, a little more value, fewer of them, obviously, and be a little closer to what you're trying to develop in the area as opposed to four less than 1,000 square foot fourplexes?
Well, if, if you split the buildings and go down to, say, duplexes instead of a fourplex, then you end up having side easement here, building, side easement, building, side easement, building. Now, all of a sudden, you've lost a lot of the usable space that you can work with. And that is very, we're so limited down here on what we can do. We, we don't, I mean, where we, we're giving up that additional space on that park, we had a lot of room before. But, you know, and we're willing to do that. But this, this is what we had to fall back on to be able to, to utilize the land, 1.7 acres, because I don't think you could stick very many duplexes and, and you'll get into a cost inefficiency per unit, is what you're going to get into, if you understand what I'm saying.
You're certain?
You're not going to have near as many people desirable to build a long driveway going back in there and build all the parking across the north end and justify it.
But you have to understand that our land use maps and our, all of other planning doesn't recognize that this is appropriate.
Yeah, I understand that.
So...
But I guess, on the other side, they're not perfect on those land use maps. Because a lot of times, they don't take into consideration man-made obstacles, like that easement getting widened 100 feet by Westar. The 500-foot line from the dike, the 1,000-foot line from the dike, what should go in that area? That should be done when they're doing the comprehensive plan. You know, and I know that flood plan's another issue. All those items have, have to be taken into consideration when you decide what you're going to use that land for.
Well, I think it is also taken into consideration when developers buy the land, that they know that, that to plunk down this, this kind of density in the middle of single-family is, is, takes a chance of not being allowed. Because it's not something that, that we've done other places in, in the town, so...
Well, if you've got a lot of obstacles to work around here, the high-power line, you don't have that in any other development that's come forward to you in the last 20 years, to my knowledge. But we do. The dike, you've had to address in the past on several developments, Guile's, River Trail. And so the time you try to make everything efficient and balance everything out, this is where we wound up.
One thing we may want to show here is just depict how the homes to the west interrelate with that power line. But if you could shift over towards Ohio there a little bit, John. The, I guess the primary difference here is that the, what, the way that was addressed from Ohio over to the Huntington Ditch is that there is a city-owned drainage right-of-way that extends from Ohio over to the Huntington Ditch. The, I don't think necessarily the, where they're proposing to have homes along here is going to be much different in location than right here. Or I think these homes are probably farther forward, but what you have here is there's kind of a 20-foot alley here, and then there's a drainage right-of-way here. And so you have a gap between those homes that, that power line easement's not part of anybody's backyard, it's part of city-owned drainage right-of-way. So what would be different is that instead of having a drainage right-of-way here, people would have ownership of lots up to this line, basically, but the rear portion of their lots would be restricted in terms of having outbuildings or things back there. They could have lawns and yards and gardens and things like that, but they would be restricted on garages and outbuildings and things of that nature. But I don't, I don't know that the homes here along the north are going to be any closer to the power line than what these homes are right here. It's just their, their lot line ends there. So I don't know if that, that helps put things in, into perspective.
How current is that aerial view?
It's a 2005 aerial photo.
So to the south, there, there are homes that have gone in, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, almost every lot here on Huntington is occupied.
Yes.
These on Falcon View are occupied. There's a couple on this side, but almost everything here. This is the duplex lot right here. All these lots here, the homes face the side street. This lot here would have a duplex that would face across there. These are single-family home lots on Red Hawk. And this is proposed Lot 48 right here that we're discussing.
One other thing, that power line, as it heads east, swings way south. When it was point-to-point, it was point-to-point. They had to adjust their survey to shift it to the south as they went further east towards the dike. So it, it does affect what's on that east end.
And I also think of people who have built single-family homes or have bought land to build a single-family home, not having any idea. And virtually, why would you think that 16 units were going to be going in right there?
12.
Because it's not something that we do in the city, so it wouldn't be something I would think of necessarily when I bought a lot or bought a home there or built a home there. And that, that bothers me.
That it might not even be divulged to property, people buying property north of it? That it's a possibility that that would be a...
Well, or those that are already there. And when they purchase their, their homes and property, that they would, you know, we always get complaints on the city commission of, don't, why are you putting in a, a quick trip in my neighborhood? Well, because it could be zoned that way, and it's on a corner, and you'd think that that in the future could be used in that way. Well, people that bought there, I don't know that you'd even think that there would be that kind of density in the middle of a single-family area.
Why is the one lot a duplex? Is that the one that's facing? I'm sort of turned around because I went down Wayne, and it came to a dead end, and, and over here was this barn. So where is the barn?
Barn is right here.
Okay.
In that photo.
Okay.
Wayne comes here today, and, and you make a turn to the south on Red Hawk.
Okay, and then Red Hawk will continue on through?
Red Hawk will continue up, and then Wildcat Circle will come around like that. So this, this is one of the, for a single building, possible fourplex, triplex, duplex. Same here. This is a duplex lot here primarily because it, it faces the substation and faces what's across the street, and it seemed less likely that that would be a desirable lot. It's the only lot there that doesn't face a side street.
Now, is the objection to the power lines aesthetic or safety, or both? I mean, is safety an issue with the power lines, or is it basically aesthetic we're talking about?
Well, there's been a number of reports out on high-power voltage lines, how they affect causing brain tumors and stuff like that. I don't know if it's true. Of course, cell phones are supposed to do the same thing, too.
Uh-oh.
Ah, so I guess a lot of us are in trouble, but it's aesthetics, kids climbing on them, and I just don't think people want to look at it.
Okay. And I think the nature also of renters in four, you know, in, in this area, you just have a whole different feel of activity that goes on. People moving in and out, I don't know. It just...
Well, I imagine you'd be talking about rentals, be renting up over 7, 750 a month each unit, so I don't think they're going to be lower-end rentals.
I don't know, Sidney. I just, you know, I think we need rental units in town some places. It seems like this is bordered with a street on one side, a park on two sides, half of the other side's what's been described as kind of a wasteland area.
Oxbow.
Yeah. And, and then we're down to one, one unit. I mean, at some point, every apartment building in town abuts to single-family dwelling probably on one side of it, anywhere you might go. If, you know, if you go to the mall and you buffer with multi-housing, then you go to single-family. Well, someone's going to be by, by it at any point in time, so...
But I don't know that we have any that are, are dropped into the middle of all
Well, there's some duplexes here. I mean, we've mentioned eight or 10 duplexes around the area. We've got a dike, we've got a flood zone, we've got a lot of different issues in the problem. I, I, you know, I don't know.
I'm comfortable with duplexes, not fourplexes.
Yeah. I'm kind of... There's a road problem with that particular area to get to that and make that effective. I understand what he's saying on building.
I think I'm in semi-in agreement with you on that. I, I look at the area, and I grew up in that street, on, on Wayne Street, and so I'm kind of a little familiar when they put the... of a little familiar when they put the power station in and a little of it. I wish there was a better use for that area. I think it's risky to do a development with, with a bunch of rental property at your entrance when you want to get $160,000, $180,000 for a house, but that's, that's their choice and, and they're willing to risk it. I, I, we've talked about this a few weeks in a row. I, I can't see any real reason, I mean, I understand what Sidney's saying, too, to say that, you know, especially those people that have already built houses there, but I, I just don't know that there's really any other way to do that short of Tim just donating that land to make the park even bigger. That, that would be nice. In lieu of future developments, we could maybe look at that.
I've got a partner.
Oh, oh darn. But I, I just, yeah, I have a hard, I mean, I, I have a hard time seeing that, it's not going to be profitable for you to put houses there, obviously. I mean, I'm in real estate, I know that. And you are talking about higher-end rentals, and our new mayor says there's no affordable housing in Salina. We might, I might disagree with his take on that, but obviously there, I think, we're not talking about the rentals that are in my neighborhood, we're talking about nicer rentals. I think it's...
That's correct.
I think we're not going to have the, the normal associated rental problems. I think about, over there on Wayne Street, there's three, three or four rental houses there next to a bunch of single-family homes. It is next to a school, but that's predominantly a, that's a bit of a fringe area with some dockers' offices and stuff there, but, you know, I don't know that that's been a big, a big problem over there, but I, I probably wouldn't do it if it were my development, but I don't know that I totally disagree with you doing it either. I guess it's my take to kind of agree with you a little bit more.
Is that, is that your lot immediately to the south of Lot 48?
Yes.
Now, what's planned for that lot?
That'd be single-family. But we're looking at, on that south side, putting quite a tree buffering in there, you know. They'll have to work with the, what do they call it, landscaping committee or, or park, I don't know who handles that stuff, but they'll have to have a proper tree buffer there on the south side for this to work.
What we suggested on page three of our report is that the, that this is conceptual. It is, it would establish the parameters of a development and then that when there was a specific development plan or, or permit to construct something there, that, that would be reviewed and approved by the planning commission as part of a final development plan, so the appropriate buffers and that type of thing would be addressed at, at that time. I think from our staff perspective, we mostly wanted to see how it would lay out, how it would le, how it was feasible to lay 12 units or four, for three, four-unit buildings there. I think they have done that so that everybody could visualize that. I don't, I don't think it necessarily overwhelms the, the site, and I think the question from a compatibility standpoint is what, what do you do on that south transition yard between this and the single-family lot to the south over here, just to make that transition less abrupt. I mean, there are different landscaping and buffering techniques that you can use to do that, and so then it, then how you buffer that and how you transition that can, can minimize that impact. And then on the north, we're going to have a park between this area and the single-family homes.
Mr. Hallison, what would you say the relative cost of that lot south of Lot 48 there would be compared to the lots in the Golden Eagle Estates addition are going to be?
Well, the lot south of there is 100, no, it's 85-foot wide, if I'm correct. Is that right, Don?
I don't know.
Okay. So that lot's probably going to be neighborhood around 23.5 because it's within 1,000 square foot of the dock, so it's going to have to have a reinforced foundation. Cuts right across him last two, south of this.
A comparable lot to the north?
The one to the north. Realistically, I, I would say that you could probably get a neighborhood of around 135,000 for that 1.7 acres, which actually is about three of those lots, three or four.
I'm sorry. What I was trying to do is to, to determine the value of the lot south of Lot 48 and the, and the value of the lots north, in other words...
Oh, to the north up here?
Yes.
Yeah, the one to the south probably around 23.5, and the ones to the north will probably be, I'd guess, in the vicinity of 13,000 to 15,000, somewhere in there. And that's only because it'll be backed up to a park.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think it'd be a little less. Because you're within 1,000 feet on most of them, 500 feet from the dock on the rest.
The single-family lot directly to the south is 100 feet wide and 202 feet deep.
Okay.
So it's a pretty healthy-sized residential lot.
So we're talking maybe 20% more for that particular lot, Tim? Is that a good guess?
Are you talking about the difference between the multiple family versus single?
No, 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 I'm talking about like kind of what he is, a similar type lot that's up in Golden Eagle Number Five, residential lot, versus the cost of that lot that's set in Golden Eagle.
Well, your bigger lots, you actually don't come out as well on, as a developer. When you plat those big lots, they, they don't pay very well.
Right.
Like what you see in Norton Subdivision and Hayworth and all that. Your smaller lots, it's just like everything else, they, they pay the bulk of the return. I mean, there's more hookups for the utility companies, a little smaller width, so the street costs go down and, and the people can afford them easier on the, on the specials.
I think what you're looking for is basically how expensive a home is going here, how expensive a home is going up there.
Well, they're going to be...
Compatible?
No, they're going to be, they're going to be a little cheaper to the north because you're, you're in a different area. You're north of that high-power line, you're going to be, oh, I'd guess 60,000 difference at least, maybe 80.
But, but not as expensive as something a little farther south on Red Hawk, though?
No, no, Red Hawk south, further south would be better.
Could you somehow combine that lot to the south with Lot 48 and come up with a, I'm going to call it a better plan than three, fourplexes? With a little cul-de-sac in there or something?
Well, you'd be in the replat on that. You'd be into a replat, which is probably another month or two down the line. We had thought about that, and because of the replat situation, then notification and all that, all the way south, and all of a sudden you're just moving this south further. And then the people next door to that get upset, and then if you move it two lots south, then it's the third lot south, so you see what I mean? It's just staggers on down.
Is there a way...
That's why we didn't do it.
Yeah, is there a way maybe to... Wow, this is getting more into Dean's area. Is there a way to basically say, you know, we'll approve all the rest of this, you can get started? Pending Lot 48, if we don't approve 48, you're giving us a park. No, I'm not saying that, but I mean, basically, I understand Tim's holdup. I mean, we don't want to keep pushing him back. He's in business. We're keeping him from making a living here. By every time we ask him to do something like this, we make it harder and harder on him.
Well, I mean, you can simply recommend that Lot 48 have a single-family residential designation at this time, whether that's a holding zone or whatever that is, and then that would allow for something to be proposed or fleshed out later, but if you, the, the lot to the south, the, right here is zoned, are single-family residential. If you simply said that you recommended that, that that lot be rezoned but to single-family only, then you always have the option of coming in with the, a alternate designation than that.
Yeah.
I mean, let me, let me suggest something.
It would mean that it's, it's left in that configuration for now.
If, I don't have my partner in support of this, Neil Reyes-Kane, but if as opposed to 12 units, we did something less than that on that lot.
Well, I think Mrs. Soderbergh said that duplexes would not be as offensive as fourplexes. How could you work that into three or four buildings of duplexes rather than fourplexes?
Oh, they could. They've got plenty of room. I, I guess what I would say is if you would be in support of four duplexes, maybe we could go that route, if, if that's the big issue.
It seems like that would support more of what, what else is in the area.
All right.
If that works for you, four duplexes?
We'd be in support of that. If you took a vote on four duplexes, we'll live with that.
What about the other lots up there where you have availability to do three? Would you do the same thing there?
Up where?
Weren't you asking for some more potential threeplexes next to the power station there?
Well, I think we already, you already say that that was all...
Duplexes.
Pretty much okay, but yeah, well, we had to zone up four units, but it's never going to take fourplexes. Those are going to be triplexes or duplexes because you just simply can't make it work.
So if we did a couple of triplexes up there and then the duplexes, I mean, could we get Tim moving down the road so we don't have to see him again, or? Much as I like him, I...
Yeah, yeah.
He wants to go make money.
Yeah.
Go forth and prosper.
To eight, eight units as opposed to 12.
Right.
So there'd be four duplexes on that property rather than three, fourplexes?
If that's what the consensus is.
No more than four. You would be happy with three.
All right, that's fine.
The other thing is, it seems to me the six lots on the, against the levee should be townhomes for individual ownership as opposed to rental units when you're talking about duplexes.
Dean, how do we clarify that? Just, I mean, everybody says townhomes, but I don't have any issue with the firewalls being built.
Yeah, here, I, we've done it, well, we certainly did it on the Eagle Crest project. We've, the, we've, I think we've used the terminology owner-occupied, single-family-attached dwellings. In our, I mean, Tim is correct that the, the statutory definition of a townhome is where you have a homes association and the people only buy the unit, but we refer to what you have over there on River Trail and what was built up to the levee as townhomes from the standpoint that they are constructed in a way that they can be sold separately. There are different building code requirements for a single-ownership rental unit as opposed if you said that they were, that was zoned for up to two units per dwelling for townhomes, then we would make sure that they were constructed as townhomes.
That's fine.
Realizing that it's perfectly legal to rent a townhome out to somebody, just like you can rent a single-family dwelling out.
And you weren't, you were never really envisioning in that as a, as rental property anyway.
No, I...
Those were to be sold as individual houses.
It's going to be duplex-type units, but when you say duplexes, they always have the possibility of being split, just like what you had at Chilling. But what Dean's trying to say, you need a firewall in there. I don't have any issue with that being a requirement on all those, regardless of what's built. Built to townhome specs.
And then they could be sold to individuals if they want to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oftentimes with a duplex, somebody will buy the whole thing and rent out one half of it and live in the other half.
They have to move. Sometimes they move out of state and somebody has to do something with their unit. Either that or get foreclosed on.
But your plan was never, I think, I think there's some confusion. I mean, you and I being in real estate, we know, we don't truly mean like the old traditional duplex where it's like Tim's company's going to own it and rent both sides. These are individually, like Eastview, these are, people own each side, it's not a rental district like what we're talking about in these duplexes.
Those are townhomes.
Yeah.
They're in Eastview. They're built in a way that they can be sold down the middle.
Townplex.
Okay.
I coined a phrase. Can we call that Householder Drive now?
Yeah.
One of these days.
So a motion we make should include that.
I think the other question left was lots 40 and 41, the side yard setback, the reduction...
What I'd like there, if we could, Dean brought up all of it. I would like to, if in the minutes of the approval, just exactly what he said. The garage on Lot 40 has to be on the west side, the garage on Lot 41 has to be on the east side, together with as little as five-foot side easement on those two sides only. And, and if that, if he'd be supportive of that, that would be...
Traditional is what?
Seven and a half.
Yeah, we can do better than that. We can put it into the, the PDD, so it's, it's written that way.
That's fine. I would like to see that. Cool.
What we're really looking at is if you look at page three of the staff report that you have in your packets there, and what we've done is we've got development limitations as follows, and we have A, B, C, and what is missing there is D, and what we need to do today is fill in D to say development on Lot 48 Block 1 shall be limited to, and what I'm hearing, four, four duplex units or what we would call four single-family-attached dwellings.
Or less.
Or less.
Never come that way, but...
Maximum of four.
Maximum.
Yeah.
And then I think we would want to, to clarify in that to maintain the 30-foot setback, which is what the dwelling to the south would have.
And, and that doesn't, that also doesn't get the side yard setback, does it? Do we need to add an E or not?
Well, that would, what we'd be doing is amending item A there on page two, that, that on, on, we would amend that section there to just call out that on lots 40 and 41, that the, the garage, garages on 41 would be on the, required to be on the east side of the lot, abutting the, the park corridor, and on 40, on the west side of the lot, and then that the side yard, what we have there is an exception for 20-foot front yard setback. We would just stipulate a five-yard side yard setback for lots 40 and 41 in that section. And then what we're missing is, is a item D under there, which would spell out development on Lot 48. So those would be the two, two amendments or actions today.
I'd like to invite any interested citizens to comment on this before we bring it back to the commission. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Any further comments from the applicant?
No.
Now, he's leaving.
Do I need to be nervous that, we all agree that we don't want to see a fourplex next to the substation, but you could conceivably get a fourplex in there?
No, I, you just simply have to go in there to sub item C and, and amend that, say one single-family-attached dwelling and strike containing no more than four units per building and just strike it.
He keeps saying it's not going to get a fourplex, it'll get a triplex, but I guess I'd feel better if we're all saying, and we all understand it's not going to be a fourplex, it'll be a triplex or duplex.
Just want to make sure it's just a threeplex in there, make sure the wording's there. Okay?
Yeah.
And in an earlier rendition of this application, it was requested for approval of fourplexes, and, and that was, at the time, seeming it wasn't a subject of debate, so that was just a carryover. But if there is a willingness on their part and a concern there, then what you should do is, is just say shall be limited to one single-family-attached dwelling, which would automatically limit it to two units.
Two, I think, I think we're willing to do a triplex.
Okay.
So can we say, containing no more than three?
Three units per building.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Tim, do you understand where we are on that?
Yeah, see, we took one, there were three lots there originally, a long time ago, and we took one lot out, so I think triplexes work fine, and I'm in agreement with that. Fourplexes, I don't see it working.
All right.
Let's see, he's coming.
Mr. Benjamin. State your name and address, please.
Mike Benjamin at 20 Red Fox Lane. I don't know if this is the time to talk...
Mike Benjamin at 20 Red Fox Lane. I don't know if this is the time to talk about it or not, but would like to have some commitment from the city that you guys will address the water problem in the Oxbow. I don't want to create any problems for Tim and Dan on the, their portion of it, but just would like to have the city address that problem with the okay of this development.
Thank you.
How do we do that?
I believe we discussed it last time and that there was sort of a verbal commitment, I thought, from this.
That would be your recommendation. It would be your recommendation. Obviously, we will have to bring that up with the city commission and since they have the purse strings, it would be, it would be a recommendation from you.
And what is it that we're recommending exactly?
Well, the, what we have is that about, and then four years or so ago, there was a, well, we had various master plans for addressing this area, but one of the identified needed improvements was this section of the Huntington ditch, which we showed you photographs of, that is unimproved, doesn't carry much water wells, obstructed frequently, that you widen that out and make it comparable to this and to this channel here. What you would have to do when you did that was, you'd have to come up here and you'd have to have an intersection or construction here. That's where much of the obstruction is. So this is a project that would be funded by the city's One Mill Levy Flood and Drainage Fund, and then as part of the design for that, we would have to make improvements up here where it intersected the Oxbow. What you can't do is decide to fund this project because you don't have any purse strings. So you can recommend that as part of the drainage improvements to the Huntington ditch, that it addressed that obstruction up there, but that would ultimately be decided, the city commission decides what projects they want to do with the flood and drainage fund.
But I think it's helpful if we make a specific recommendation.
And recognize that there is a obstruction or problem there.
Well, in the interest of looking like a hero, I suggest the city do something about that darn Oxbow. How about that?
I was going to just go over record that, once again, we agree to give immediate access to the city to proceed to do any cleanup in there that they want and have immediate access. Would sign something so they can go in there and do whatever they need to do. So that would open the door for engineering, I guess, and city commissioners. But that could go on the minutes of approval.
Okay, do you want me to try a motion here?
I'm glad.
I don't know if my notes are good enough. Okay, I will recommend.
Those should be two separate items, not, correct?
Well, I think it can be done in one motion, that we would, we would be looking at amending the subsection A there to allow for a five-foot side yard setback on lots 40 and 41, and then we would be adding a subsection D that would stipulate what the development limitations are on lot 48, block one.
Well, yeah, I'll move approval of PDD 08-1 with the addition to development limitations. A, add that garage placement on lot 40 must be on the west and lot 41 on the east, and the side yard setback will be waived to five foot. Under C, we will strike four units, so it will be containing no more than three units per building, and add section D, that development on lot 48, block one should be limited to a maximum of four single family attached dwellings.
Four duplexes.
Single family attached dwellings. Four single family attached dwellings. And that we would then recommend to the city that they recognize that there is a drainage problem and that they're, consider widening Huntington Beach with improvements at the Oxbow obstruction.
I'll second that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded, and I'm not going to try to repeat it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda, application Z 08-1 filed by the Salina City Commission requesting a comprehensive review and amendment of the list of permitted and conditional uses in section 42-302 and 42-303 of the C4 Central Business District Regulations, continued on April 1st, 2008, to obtain additional public input.
We went back to the Board of Advisors, the downtown or Lee District Board of Advisors meeting that they had on April the 8th, exactly a week ago, and we discussed some additional items that staff had combed out of the ordinance that had not been discussed at their previous meeting, and those uses we had identified or at least had some question marks about were dog kennels, mini warehouses, small animal hospitals, packaged liquor stores, private Cubs, recycling centers, and also based on a report from the downtown parking master plan, a suggestion or recommendation to make private surface parking lots in the downtown core conditional uses. What the Board of Advisors recommended was that the, that list of dog kennels, mini warehouses, small animal hospitals, private clubs, and recycling centers be placed in the conditional use category. They were not concerned about packaged liquor stores and recommended retaining those as a permitted use, and then they thought that the downtown design review board was equipped to deal with the question of surface parking lots and parking garages and recommended leaving that as a permitted use. So what you have in your packet with the strikes and underlines, and it reflects exactly what the Board of Advisors' recommendation was. The other part of that dealt with, and we'll have to work a little bit to clean up definitions, but they recommended that, that we distinguish between drinking, restaurants that happen to serve alcohol and the true bar that has no food service. So their recommendation, again, which is reflected here, is that restaurants that serve alcohol would be permitted. The only establishments that would go through a conditional use permit review process would be a, a true bar or dance club that had no kitchen or food service.
Could you talk a little bit about the parking lot item, the hard surface parking lot?
Well, the, the group that came in and studied parking in the downtown area and management of that, they prepared and submitted a report, and that report recommended that the city was in the best position to manage parking in the downtown area because of the public parking lots, and that to effectively do that, the city needed to control somewhere at least between 50 and 60 percent of the available parking. And along that lines, they recommended that the city discourage the construction or addition of privately owned surface parking lots, because it would make it more difficult for the city to manage parking in the downtown, plus it might, might be an incentive to create spaces that were surface parking lots that might be utilized for some other use. So one way for the city to manage and regulate parking is to require city approval of new private surface parking lots. The mechanism that we recommended was a conditional use permit, which is commonly used in other communities, but not all communities have a downtown design review board like we currently do. So their idea was the, those proposals already have to be reviewed by the downtown design review board. Why don't you just leave it that way? It's a permitted use now, subject to review by the design review board. Why not just leave it that way? And so that's the way we, we drew it up. And it's permitted today. They recommended leaving it permitted today with the understanding, if you were in a downtown that didn't have a design review board, then it probably would be, the planning commission would be in the best position to do that. They, they said that we've already got a review process, why create two? And there's a valid point to that. So I don't, I don't know the best, we've, we've done this in pieces. I don't know the best way to summarize that, but we just, we basically had, the two parts there were appliance store, sales and service, restaurants that served alcohol, furniture repair, glass and mirror sales, hand crafts and ceramics. All those would move to the permitted category. Massage parlors, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, and body piercing studios would be added to the list of conditional uses and pawn shops would shift over to that list. And so I guess one, one way to act on that would be to concur with the recommendations of the Lee District Board of Advisors, or certainly you can deviate from their recommendations if you, if you feel strongly about one or more of those uses.
Well, I love my massage parlors, but I'm sorry. I, if we, we just need to make a motion on this and roll through with it?
Well, if you, if you concur with their, with their recommendations, that's one option, or if you disagree, you don't need to list them all out. You can simply concur with their recommendation unless you feel strongly about one of those uses. For us, the biggest issue was, in the past, every, every place that served alcohol was subject to a conditional use. They're proposing moving away from that. We're comfortable with that.
All right, if there's no, is there anyone in the public who would like to address this issue? All right. We'll bring it back to the board for action. You could try.
Now, under section 42-302, you have permitted uses, and some of them, like 21, you have dog kennels, you know, struck out, and then the idea of conditional is, are we saying conditional? No?
No, it goes on to the conditional list, I think, is what that means.
Conditional means that you have to propose a location and how you're going to operate it and have it approved before you could open it.
But is it then added to the list under 303?
Yes. It's just picked up and shifted over there.
It isn't there right now.
It is, it is a permitted use today, and what that arrow means is that we would, the arrow means it's being shifted to conditional. That's their recommendation. Mini warehouses would be shifted to conditional, pawn shops shifted to conditional.
Okay.
And where you see the arrow and the word conditional, that means when we actually draft up an ordinance, that's, that's where we would put it.
Okay.
Since we had a planning commission meeting on the first and a board of advisors meeting on the eighth and this meeting on the 15th, and that's as quick as we could turn it around for you.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Okay, let's, let's do it. Let's, let's, I move that we approve Z 08-1 filed by the City Salina Commission requesting a comprehensive review and amendment of the list permitted conditional uses in sections 42-302 and 42-303 of the C4 Central District, Central Business District Regulations. Do we need to add, as per the Lee District's recommendations?
Lee District Board of Advisors.
Board of Advisors' recommendations.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to concur with the recommendations of the Lee District Advisory Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda. I was just thinking whether I'm supposed to say how many it carries by. I have not been doing that. Next application on the amended, on the agenda is P 81-2B filed by Jason Moller of Crafton, Toll, Sparks &amp; Associates on behalf of Salina Partners LLC requesting approval of a replat of lot one, block one of the Lambert's addition into three platted building lots. The subject property is a 10.79 acre tract of land located on the west side of Ninth Street, south of the Midstate Plaza. We have a staff report.
Thank you, ma'am chairman. This is the, a proposed replat of an existed platted area, and just, just to give you a little, the background and history, there was a, a tract of ground that was purchased back in the late 1960s for a mall site, and the Midstate Mall was constructed on the northern portion of that in 1969 on unplatted property that was in, in the county. And the, the remaining piece of that to the south was viewed as a future phase or expansion area for the Midstate Mall, and that, that simply did not occur. The property was included in a 1970 annexation of the mall property, but there was not any application to plat or zone that property until 1981, and the final plating and zoning of the Lambert's addition did not occur until 1984. And this, this plat was platted as one large lot and block, and there was a 40-foot frontage road parallel and adjacent to Ninth Street. I think most of you can remember back to when the Dickinson Drive-In Theater was out there, and we had a frontage road that came up from the south that was about five feet from Ninth Street that intersected at, at Belmont Plaza, or at Belmont Boulevard. And when the Belmont Plaza went in, we, we moved away from those frontage roads adjacent to the Ninth Street and, and tried to move them away to get more stacking. And so for that reason, the, the 40-foot frontage road that is actually platted right here is obsolete, and it can't be connected to anything because we've got Fazoli's and Subway sitting right here. There was really no specific plan at the time that plat was approved in 1984, and so the property has really sat vacant at that time. There was some drainage, there was a South Salina drainage study that was done. There was a drainage study done for this property, but since 1984, there hasn't been any development. There hasn't been any other drainage analysis up until the point where Mr. Moller has gone in and done a new drainage analysis of the property reflecting all the changes in the South Ninth Street corridor. So we have three things at work here. We have a replating of the property. We have a property that's located in an identified critical drainage area for the city, and then we have a property that we're dealing with where over 75 percent of the property is located within a mapped hundreds year floodplain area. And I think in a meeting we had, Mr. Moller probably correctly stated that this property has really served as a regional drainage deposit area for a fairly large area for an extended period of time. And so the, the purpose of the replat is to create several building sites for future commercial development to arrange this property in a way that's more conducive to commercial development in 2008 instead of 1984. It has been characterized that, that one of the primary purposes of this is to create a building site for a future coal store, but I guess I would refer and would want to walk through the items on page two of your, a report that was, was at, put at your place at the start of the, the meeting, and that is that- And that is that, um, what we're trying to address here is, one, approving or recommending approval of a break in access on Ninth Street. Right now, from K dot restrictions, this is platted as restricted access all the way there, so you cannot connect a street or driveway there to Ninth Street at this time. The replat would also address vacating a forty-foot frontage road that's here and return that back to private property ownership and use. Um, it involves a revised drainage study that meets the city's subdivision drainage criteria. It would involve, um, identification of the floodplain boundary. When this was platted in nineteen eighty-four, there weren't any mapped or identified floodplanes. That occurred after the fact. The replat would dedicate drainage and utility easements and public street right-of-way that's needed. It would address, um, what the street intersection configuration would be here where Planet Avenue would, would become an intersecting street with, um, Key Avenue extending west. It would determine, uh, what sort of access rights there would be across the Midstate property. It would achieve the subdivision of lots and it would, um, address how the detention pond is going to be maintained. So John, I guess if you could go to the, um, proposed plat or, um, one of the, I guess we'll, we'll do with that. But our original, um, plan, again, that we had a frontage road coming up right here, that would be wiped out. And this is Office Max and Subway here, so you would have Planet Avenue extending up here. There, there are, um, there are turn lanes and a crossover and everything there at Key Avenue. That would become the, the major entryway. All the access to the lots would be internal off of Planet Avenue or, or Key Avenue. As far as the lot design, we've got three lots, one, lot one, block one designated as a future site for coal store. Lot two to the south of that for future retail addition or expansion. And then a large outlot along Ninth Street. So this, this would be a separate block, block two, uh, because of the separation there. As far as the, uh, the lots, meaning minimum building requirements, they are all buildable from a frontage and, and lot size standpoint. The developer would have an option of going in here in the future and splitting this outlot to create two parcels. That could be one time, be done one time without deed. The only foreseeable option, or least obstacle right now for obtaining building permits is the fact that the, um, elevation there today, for a good part of that site, is three, three to four feet below the hundred-year flood elevation. So this is going to require the importation of fill material and a substantial grading needed to create an elevated building pad on these lots. So for example, the, uh, existing grade where the coal store would be located is about twelve thirty-seven today. Their plans call for a finished floor of, of twelve forty-two, which means they're, they would be elevating these low areas here by anywhere from four to five feet with fill to get up to the necessary elevation. I think I'll have you go to the, um, aerial photo there, John. Well, to one, one of the ones that's, that's already packaged. This just gives you an idea of what, what is surrounding the site in terms of a network of water and sewer lines. And there's a twelve-inch water line in Ninth Street. They would plan to bring a loop in here that would, would be a public water line loop that would provide fire protection and domestic flows to the coal store and the future retail expansion. Those lines would be part of the public water system. And so easements would need to be provided for those. As far as sewer, um, there is a public sewer system in Belmont Plaza, but it ends right here and the sewer's only four feet deep. So they, um, opted instead to look at a private sewer collection system that would, would start, these sites would be, um, collected, go to a point here and come up. And if you could scan up a little farther, John. There is a private sewer that comes out of Midstate right here. They would bring a private sewer line up here. Um, it has a crossing here and then would tie into the public system over in, uh, a manhole in Parkway. This will necessitate obtaining private utility easements from Capital Federal and the owners of Midstate to allow that sewer line to go across their property. And it, it couldn't be located in the right-of-way because it is private. And, uh, the applicants have been working on that to achieve those off-site easements. As far as electricity, the site is basically surrounded by overhead power on all four sides and it would simply be a matter of extending service lines into the site. Kansas Gas has gas lines in Ninth Street. They would extend gas lines in Key and Planet Avenue, uh, to provide natural gas. Um, fire response would be from station number three, uh, located at Belmont and Key. I think probably the most challenging aspect of this project for the, uh, the design engineer has been, um, dealing with the, the storm drainage and the, and the storm drainage that, that comes to this property from off-site. But on, on page five, we've kind of summarized for you, um, what we're looking at in terms of when a pro, proposed drainage system will carry water across adjacent private land outside the subdivision, appropriate drainage rights must be secured and indicated on the plat. Um, so one of the most challenging aspects of this is we know the water collects here. What do we do with it now? And the proposal that was put forward was to construct a, uh, a storm sewer from here behind Midstate, take it up around the back of Midstate and take it to a location where there's a crossing of a storm sewer that goes under Magnolia Road that carries runoff from the Midstate parking lot. It would cross under Magnolia and go into the, uh, Magnolia Ditch on the north, north side of, uh, Magnolia Road there. So the, the basic elements of the plan is you have off-site runoff coming from here that would go in a pipeline along here and be carried to a pond. You would have internal collection system for the department store parking lot and a portion of Planet Avenue. That would come down to here and go into the pond. A grass-lined detention pond, um, would be designed that has to, most of our ponds in Salina for Lowe's or for Target or places like that, they only have to be sized to accommodate the runoff that comes off of that parking lot or building. Here, they're having to size a pond that will accommodate both runoff from this site after it's developed and also, um, the runoff that's already coming here from the south and southeast. Um, the plan would be this would be a dry bottom pond and that it would gravity discharge through an outlet to the north. So there will not be pumps involved, nor would there be, um, a water level retained. It's not a water feature. It's designed to be a dry, dry bottom type, um, pond. I think the other, other things that we would point out, and, uh, Mr. Nelson can expand on that, is that the, uh, our design criteria would require normally that a, a dry bottom pond have a four to one slope if it's a grass-lined pond because that, that allows for a slope that's, that's mowable and maintainable. And also for an eight, eight-foot, um, berm around the outside for maintenance and vehicular access. This pond design, um, does not have either of those. Now, what you have in the way of those slides, John, if you could go to that? Guess that would be number eight, wouldn't it? So the, uh, the, the store location would be here. You would have the, the detention basin. This is our pipeline coming over from Ninth Street. This would be the basin and you would have a discharge point up here that would go into a storm sewer behind the Midstate Plaza. And so this is, this is a very tight constrained site. You're limited on how deep you can go because you want to maintain a positive flow or outlet out of the pond. So to achieve that, there are three to one slopes here, not four. And we don't have the berm around the outside. It's basically sloped up, up to the edge and up to the edge of the easement. The other aspect that we would have is that the, uh, a pipeline would carry the, the runoff from the pond behind Midstate Plaza and to, um, the Magnolia Road ditch. And what we've concluded is that this is, because of the large area served, this is really, um, as we get here, it's part of the public drainage system. We've asked, um, the applicants, developers to obtain obviously permission from Midstate to allow that construction to occur. But ultimately that would be an easement and a system that would be dedicated over to the city as a, uh, as a public drainage easement and would become part of the public drainage system once it was constructed. So in terms of the dedications that we'd be looking at here, we would have a public dedication of right-of-way for, I guess we'd want to go back to the plat, John, which would be, um, number four. This would be dedicated as public streets. We would have, um, right-of-way dedicated for those. All the utility easements shown on the plat would be dedicated for public utilities. We would also have a storm drainage easement dedicated here and along here for drainage. We would have restricted access dedicated on Ninth Street here, except for this opening. And if they wish to come back at a later date and request a, a write-in and, or write-out, um, as those outlots develop, they could do so in the future. But you would have dedicated restricted access in that location. So the, uh, the other thing, it's a little different about this from the standpoint of easements and dedications and what the applicant's engineers had to work with is that we have these onsite easements that are under the control of the applicant and the landowner. But we have a, uh, off-site storm drainage easement, a, uh, a no-build easement that's being dedicated by Midstate here that creates a no-build zone. We have private sewer line easements that extend off-site. And there's also ongoing discussions about cross-access easements that would allow interconnection between this development and the, uh, Midstate development to the north. There are no streets in Midstate. It's all private-owned and private driveways. So that would have to be negotiated privately between the two parties. But we have, um, on a single sheet there, um, some recommended conditions, um, for approval of this replat as proposed. And, uh, the first item being that the city engineer approved the, uh, public street and public water line extensions needed to serve this subdivision. In other words, that those plans, uh, be reviewed and approved and that, uh, those public improvements either be installed or if, um, construction proceeds prior to those being the streets and water lines being installed, uh, that we have sufficient financial guarantees in place assuring that we won't have a, uh, a shell of a building or, or building there and not have the public improvements catch up to that. So by having those financial guarantees in place, that would allow building and site work to, uh, proceed ahead of having those improvements actually installed. That during construction, we have an all-weather emergency access road and a hydrant and operational water system before we begin vertical construction on any lot. Um, that the, uh, owner and developer submit complete construction plans for the, the pipeline and stormwater detention pond for approval by the city engineer. And that all that work related to drainage improvements be complete before there's a certificate of occupancy for any lot within the subdivision. We're also asking that the, uh, owner have in place a maintenance agreement or private covenants that relate to how that pond would be maintained before any lots are sold. And the idea behind that is if, if, the way it works to the south here with Fazoli's and Subway and Goodwill is that they have an association, they all pay dues, they all contribute towards the maintenance of the pond, even though it's located on Office Max's lot, it really serves everyone. So what item four there is designed for is that if somebody comes along and wants to buy this or a portion of this, then they're going to be responsible for helping to maintain this pond. There needs to be something of record that they can find when they, uh, look to buy that lot that tells them that they will have that obligation and, and what that would be. And then we would have a requirement that all the off-site easements that are required, and that would mean the, the storm drainage easement, the off-site sewer easement and the no-build easement be not only executed but recorded with the plat prior to occupancy of any of the, of the buildings in this subdivision. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions. Mr. Nelson from City Engineering Department is much more conversant with the drainage issues than I am, so I defer any drainage questions to him. And then we have the, uh, design engineer, Mr. Moller, who has worked on all the design work for this subdivision available for any questions you have of him.
This'll work? This is all workable?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Uh, Dean, did you present the commission with my letter?
I don't know that if copies of that all got placed there, but Mr. Nelson had prepared a, a letter concluding that the, uh, and I'll let him speak to the, what your conclusions were.
Yes, uh, the, uh, I've reviewed the, uh, report submitted by the applicant. I think it's, uh, key to understand that, as Mr. Andrew mentioned earlier, that this site drains a considerable amount of, uh, acreage outside of the, uh, site itself. Uh, in fact, nearly sixty-six acres of, uh, of, uh, watershed drains through this property. Uh, the, uh, calculations that, uh, the engineer provided, uh, comply with the standards and the, uh, requirements set forth in the, uh, design standards adopted by the city of Salina. The, uh, I think it's also key to, uh, realize that the detention basin that's been designed for this property has been sized to accommodate the, uh, hundred-year storm event. The, uh, city criteria for a commercial property would require detention of a twenty-five-year storm. So the size of this, uh, detention facility is considerably larger than what would be required as a minimum. It's also, uh, interesting that the post-development of the, uh, site does not contribute a significant addition to the runoff to the, uh, volume of water that's going to be discharged and that the discharge of the detention basin will be at a rate considerably less than what is currently being discharged, not only at a, uh, equals, equal-sized storm event, but for a considerably larger storm event. So the volume- There are several deviations from the site plan or the design criteria. Mr. Andrew spoke to those earlier. The side slopes of the pond are at three-to-one rather than four-to-one. There is not an eight-foot access road or vehicular access at this point. And the pond itself is a, has a flat bottom to it as opposed to a 2% cross-slope that the design criteria would have us designed into it. One of the advantages, though, of a flat-bottom pond would be that it creates a, what the industry refers to as water quality volume. This allows for treatment of the first flush from the runoff event as it comes through the facility. It allows the water a stilling period where some of the floatables, the oils, sediment and that will be able to settle out and increase the quality of the water as it's discharged downstream. Now, water quality volume is not something that is currently mentioned or a part of our current design criteria. However, the stormwater industry is, in fact, moving towards that direction. And in fact, the best management practice manual that the city of Salina is considering, which two of our members here are on the advisory committee, that is a large component of what that BNP manual is speaking to, not only reducing volume runoff, but increasing the water quality. And I would applaud our applicants for taking that type of act to better the quality of water in the city of Salina.
So the fact that it doesn't have the four-to-one slope, it doesn't have the eight-foot berm, and it doesn't have the 2% cross-slope is not a problem. None of those are a problem.
In spite of those deficiencies, I guess we'll call it, from our design criteria, I still approve of the design and would recommend that be accepted.
It's interesting to see you implementing some of the things. We talked at these slip meetings, you know, about the 2% slope was causing such extreme depth at the far end of the pond that it almost didn't work in some cases. How deep would that pond be with respect to the, let's say, the pad elevation of the store? What do you think the difference in elevation would be to the bottom of the pond to the...
Jason, do you have an answer off the top of your head?
I mean, is it 10 feet or three feet or...
Jason Moller with Crafton Toll Sparks. Looking at the grading plan, it appears that the bottom of the pond is at an elevation of 1231. The top of the pond is approximately 1239, 1240. So it's approximately eight to 10 feet deep.
It'll store a lot of water.
Yes, it will. Yes, as I mentioned, it will handle the 100-year event.
So now the building will be at 1239 or will it be higher?
The finished floor elevation of the building is, is it 1242?
1242. The base flood elevation on the FEMA map is 1240. We've chosen to elevate the building finished floor two feet above the base flood up to 1242.
Because we all know that sometimes those 100-year floods come every five years.
Or every two weeks.
You've had two or three of these in the last couple of years. You should be good for a while.
It appears there's quite a bit of off-site improvements that have to be done. For example, isn't there a tube from this site to Magnolia?
That is correct.
Who pays for that? Is that city at large or is the developer responsible for that construction?
I think we already paid for that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the TIF agreement has to say about that, but maybe Mr. Andrew is familiar with that.
That is not a city-at-large expense. That's a development expense. But some of it will be chargeable back to the TIF bonds that will be sold, but it is not something that the city of Salina at large is constructing. We do view that as part of our future drainage system, but it is the developer's obligation to construct it to our standards and then turn it over to us.
Where does the water go right now? Just running a swale back of the mall?
At this point, well, as you can see on the, this depression here is where the water congregates now. It comes in approximately at this point, kind of meanders up and then back down. And then once the, once that area fills up, it then finds its way onto the Midstate's property.
I think Mr. Moller discovered it, and he can probably speak to it better than us, but there's an inlet in the parking lot at south end of Midstate Plaza. And when the water gets high enough in that ponding area, it'll overtop that and drain into the inlet in the Midstate parking lot. If it's below that, it basically stays in the pond.
And in the parking lot.
Yes, so ultimately, once it enters the Midstate system, then it discharges through a double 48-inch pipe under Magnolia and is sent west to Dry Creek.
And then you're building a pipe that goes behind the Midstate Mall so that won't drain onto that parking lot anymore? Okay, that's what I understood. Are there any other questions in the commission? Are there any further comments from the public interested parties? All right, if not, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I was just curious from the developer's standpoint, and I don't know what, I guess I'm expecting you to say in a public meeting, but was any of, did any of this seem outrageous You obviously understand the situation that we're in, and you know what the property is. And so did any of these requirements for development seem, from our standpoint, given to you seem unreasonable?
That's a challenging question. I've certainly been involved in many commercial site development projects around Kansas and Oklahoma. I would say there is significantly more off-site improvements required of this particular project than normal. So I think anything above and beyond the norm is just a function of this property as much as anything.
Okay, okay. Anything further? All right, entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve application P-91-2B with the five recommended conditions.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve application P-91-2B with five recommended conditions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to zero. Next item, other matters.
For other matters, our next scheduled meeting is May the 6th. We have four applications that we know of scheduled. None of them repeat business that I'm aware of, although we have, there's a proposal from the Salina Farmers Market that's currently there, at least for the past several years, have set up at Seventh and Iron. They have obtained permission and want to work out a plan for setting up in the Waters True Value Earth Care parking lot as a relocation of the Farmers Market. So that will be there for your review. And then there is a final plat, the remaining piece of Quail Meadows Estates, which is at the corner of Ohio and Schilling Road. The commercial portion of that is coming back with a final plat. You've seen it on a preliminary basis. And then we have a conditional use permit proposal or request to convert a self-service car wash to mini warehouses. So that will be before you at your meeting on the 6th. And then we've already got some items filed for the 20th, and I'll just give you just a slight background so it won't seem confusing. As part of this whole project for the TIF or tax increment financing that was set up for the Kohl's project in this subdivision, there was a fairly lengthy development agreement that had a number of covenants and development stipulations and things in it that was approved as part of that. That agreement and those covenants only last until the bonds are paid off, and then they would expire. And what the city manager would like to do is take a lot of those stipulations and put them into a planned development district ordinance for this subdivision so that those stipulations, covenants and all would, if the bonds are paid off in seven years, but the development is not all built out, then those stipulations would be put into an ordinance that would run with the land and not expire. And so there's a, we would probably be coming forward with that as a follow-up item. And then we have a replat. There's a piece of ground that's west, south of the Schilling Road Bridge and west of Dry Creek, kind of behind Schilling School. That's been a difficult site to develop, and we have a replat for us, idea for a subdivision in there, and that will be on your agenda also. So I don't see any breaks in the schedule for the foreseeable future.
City on the move.
And then my other announcement would be the week of May 5th and May 9th, the Gould Evans Planning Consultants will be here that whole week. And a part of that is they want to have a special or separate meeting. They've met some of you and interacted some of you with focus groups and advisory committee, but they want to have, it'll either be a joint meeting with the city commission or a standalone meeting, but they want to have a meeting with the planning commission during that week that we'll try to set up. And so some of the focus groups that you sat on will be reconvening that week, and they'll be here that whole week. I think with that, that would do it for this evening.
All right, the planning commission meeting is adjourned.
Under the proposal, Delta extended its current contract with pilots to 2012 and gave them 3.5% equity in the new airline. Northwest pilots say Delta pilots would be getting the better deal.